I'd like to call the City Council Caucus Meeting to order. We have four public hearings. I am actually canceling the fourth public hearing regarding provision for towing fees and fee schedules. By unanimous consent, we will schedule that for the next council meeting in three weeks. But now we'll go to the -- for original consideration, if the clerk would read number one.
Okay, item number one, for final consideration, an ordinance to amend Chapter 165 to include the addition of new greens fees categories.
This was discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, for original consideration, an ordinance establishing zoning regulations for halfway houses introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing held on Monday, May 13, 2013, at 7:00 PM at Council Chambers, Room 209, Schenectady City Hall, 105 J Street, Schenectady, New York.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with the New York State Office for the prevention of domestic violence for the purposes of receiving county funds to support a high-risk program.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Barton &amp; Le Judas, PC, for the design services and right-of-way incidental in connection with Erie Boulevard, Knott Street, J Street, and Front Street intersection improvement project for the amount of $269,000.
This was discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the implementation and funding for design services and right-of-way incidentals in connection with the Erie Boulevard, J Street, Knott Street, Front Street, Roundabout Project.
I just want to clarify with this, that because the word "roundabout" is in there, this does not mean there has to be a roundabout. It's language that apparently we have to use, but it doesn't mean that there's going to be a roundabout. So, again, without objection then on consent. Okay, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the city engineer to issue a revocable permit #574 to Shamlow Realty Company for two bollards that are approximately four-foot-high by six inches in diameter and encroach on the city right-of-way at 670 Franklin Street.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution amending and correcting Resolution 2012-65 relating to appointments to the Board of Assessment Review.
This was discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing a settlement of a claim by Patrick Donworth.
Discussed in Claims Committee, without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the distribution, dispensing, and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages during St. Anthony's Annual Street Fair.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution proclaiming April 2013 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Schenectady.
This was discussed in committee and will be presented at the Fair Housing Luncheon, not tonight, so without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution in support of U.S. Senate Bill 316 and House Representatives' Bill 630.
This will be taken out of order. Mrs. Brucker will present. Okay, item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution recognizing and honoring Carver Community Center on its 75th anniversary on May 3, 2013.
This will also be taken out of order. Ms. Porterfield will present that one.
Item number 13, a resolution designating Friday, April 26, 2013, as Arbor Day in the City of Schenectady.
This also will be taken out of order. Mr. Riggi will present that one.
Item number 14, a resolution in support of National Crime Victims Week.
Also to be taken out of order, and again, to be presented by Mr. Riggi.
Item number 15, under contract and supply, a resolution awarding the contract for the 213 waterline project on Cheltenham Avenue to Tom Kubrick Company, Inc.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution amending Resolution #2013 CS07, which awarded four bids and contracts for the Steinmetz Park renovations in the total amount of $585,400 to state that a portion of the work to be charged to the capital budget codes HV017083-201 and HW617083-201.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent. And then we'll have, by unanimous consent, a resolution to -- rather, an ordinance amending the Schenectady City Code to include a provision amending towing fees and fee schedules by resolution. So, I'll just ask for if someone would be willing to move that. This is the public hearing that I've canceled for tonight because we didn't have all the information we needed, and what I want to do is call to have the public hearing at our next council meeting in three weeks. Okay, Ms. Prazzo moved it. Okay, Mrs. Brucker, all in favor? Aye. And then, who's willing to move it to the consent agenda? Okay, Ms. Porterfield, second. Mr. Erickson, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Mrs. Brucker, seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor? Aye. And I will call for the City Council Meeting for Monday, April 22. If you would all rise for the invocation, which will be given by Reverend Abby Levering.
I thank you for allowing me to pray with you, and I hope you'll receive this prayer in the spirit in which it's offered. Let us pray. Eternal God, amid all the turmoil and changes of the world, your love is steadfast and your strength never fails. We are thinking this evening of the many places where your peace and your security are sorely needed, and we think of the violence and the destruction in Boston and in West Texas and even here in our city of Schenectady that we love so much, so our hearts are filled with prayers and longing. We give thanks for those who rush to help, the upstanders who provided solace and help when it was most needed. Help us to learn from them, to show moral courage, even when and especially when we are sorely tempted to take the easy way out. Help us learn. In this and all times of darkness and trouble, watch over us and comfort those in distress. Guide the leaders of our nation and the leaders of this city with wisdom. Bless this meeting, I pray. Bless this space and all of the people in it. Bless the words they speak to one another, that they might be words of peace. Bless all the papers that they're passing around and the decisions that they make, that these decisions may be both just and kind. Lead us, we pray, O Lord, in your ways of peace, in your holy name. Amen.
I'll ask Bill Cook of the Letter Carriers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Prazzo.
Present.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Erickson.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Ms. Blanchard is absent. Ms. Brucker.
Present.
Ms. King.
Present. All right, we have several out-of-order resolutions while I sort through the clipboards here. So, the first one is Resolution in Support of US SB 316 and HR 630, presented by Mrs. Brucker. Whereas the City of Schenectady City Council recognizes that the United States Postal Service is a vital national resource that provides essential services to 151 million households and businesses nationwide and supports more than 7 million private sector jobs. And whereas the City Council values the role of the United States Post Office institutions in our community, including our letter carriers and the local post offices. Letter carriers deliver more than just mail to the communities they serve. Post offices play a critical role, both as a business hub and community meeting place. And whereas the U.S. Post Office is the largest civilian employer of American military veterans and is a full 25% of U.S. Post Office employees have served in the military. Now therefore be it resolved that the Schenectady City Council strongly opposes Postmaster General Patrick Donahue's plan to end Saturday mail delivery and urges the U.S. Congress to pass Senate Bill 316 and House Resolution 630, the Postal Service Protection Act of 2013. And it is further resolved that the City of Schenectady believes that the proposed cuts in service would threaten the long-time viability of this American institution, that the citizens and small businesses of Schenectady rely on the vast postal network to offer affordable, accessible services that reaches every corner of our county. And that this proposal is a dangerous bill that would further damage and ultimately tear apart this essential institution. It is further resolved that the clerk of the City Council shall forward certified copies of this resolution to President Barack Obama, U.S. Congressman Paul Tonko, U.S. Senator Charles Schumer, U.S. Senator Kristin Gillibrand, New York State Governor Andrew Cuomo, and Lieutenant Governor Robert J. Duffy. Madam Chair, I would move this resolution.
Is there a second? Okay, second.
Prazzo, all in favor? Aye. Congratulations. Passes. Mr. Cook, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you to the Council, Honorable Mayor. I appreciate the consideration of this very important resolution, and I want to thank you all for your support. And the Postal Service is a very viable and important institution for the City of Schenectady and its residents, and you haven't let us down, and we won't let you down either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, item number 12, Resolution Recognizing and Honoring Carver Community Center on Its 75th Anniversary on May 3, 2013. Ms. Porterfield. You have the four.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Carver Community Center on Its 75th Anniversary on May 3, 2013. Whereas in 1938, a group of citizens interested in improving the quality of life in the African-American community formed the George Washington Carver League. And whereas in 1970, league members agreed to incorporate under the name Carver Community Center of Schenectady. And whereas Carver Community Center is dedicated to the memory of George Washington Carver. And whereas it is the mission of Carver Community Center to respond to the various needs of individuals and families living in the city and county of Schenectady and to continue to develop new initiatives to meet the ever-changing needs of our community. And whereas on May 3, 2013, Carver Community Center will be celebrating its 75th anniversary. And whereas the City of Schenectady wishes to recognize the valuable services provided by Carver Community Center to the community as a whole. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Schenectady pauses in its deliberation to recognize and express its appreciation for the valuable services provided to the Schenectady community by Carver Community Center and to applaud and to honor the Carver Community Center on its 75th anniversary this May 3, 2013. Madam President, I'd like to move the resolution.
All right, the second, Mr. Erickson, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Would you like to say something?
Mayor and City Council Members, we are very excited about this opportunity. With me is the Executive Director of the Carver Community Center, Guido Ivanella, and our Treasurer, Mr. Al Jackson. And I'm Lowell Cole, the Chairperson of the Board of Directors. We're really excited about the fact that we're celebrating 75 years. It's a long time for any organization to be in existence, and we've struggled down through the years, up and down, but we have never given up. And we will continue to work with the community and the whole county of Schenectady, and we ask for your support, continuing support. So, we thank you for this resolution. While I have a minute, I -- we did mail you our invitation to the 75th Anniversary Annual Dinner, but I want to bring you an additional paper to remind you that that dinner is coming up on May 3, and we would love to see all of you there. It'll be at the Waters Edge Lighthouse Terrace, 2 Freeman's Bridge Road. Our theme is celebrating the past, embracing our present, and welcoming the future. We think that's a very positive theme, and our speaker, keynote speaker, is Dr. Deidre Hill Butler, who's a professor at Union College. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and again, congratulations. Okay, Mr. Riggi, you have the resolutions for Arbor Day and Support of National Crime Victims Week.
Bring your people. Whereas Arbor Day was first observed -- as soon as you get that straight. You got it now. Arbor Day was first observed in 1872 with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world as a special day set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperatures, clean the air, absorb carbon dioxide, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values and beautify our community, and trees in the rainforest help keep our earth cool, and trees are a source of beauty and shade and woodlands, a source of respite and renewal. And whereas the City of Schenectady supports re-trees Schenectady each year in its tree planting projects. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council hereby joins with the Mayor of the City of Schenectady proclaiming Friday, April 26, 2013, as Arbor Day in the City of Schenectady and urges all residents to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to plant additional trees. Madam President, I move this resolution.
All right, is there a second, Mrs. Brucker? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, again, congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman Riggi. I just want to take a moment to thank the Mayor and the City Council for your support over the years. You can see by our flag, we were just awarded our 15th Year of a Tree City USA, and an Arbor Day proclamation is one of the things that makes us a Tree City USA. We just had a very successful planting on Saturday with these members of the Mont Pleasant Neighborhood Association. We put in 39 trees in the past week, so we're real excited to be doing that. We don't, as you know, we don't have city funding any longer, so we're accepting donations. We're still working off of a New York State DEC grant, as well as support from National Grid that reimburses us for trees planted under wires. So, hopefully we continue to keep planting trees. Thank you very much, we're very honored.
You can see their great work throughout the city. Every place you go, there's trees all over, and I'm glad Mont Pleasant's getting trees now too. That's good. Madam President.
You have the floor.
So, Resolution in Support of National Crime Victims Week. Whereas 18.7 million Americans are directly harmed by crime each year, and each crime affects many more family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers by leaving a lasting physical, emotional, or financial impact on people of all ages and abilities and of all economic, racial, and social backgrounds. Whereas in 1982, the President's Task Force on Victims of Crime envisioned a national commitment to a more equitable and supportive response to victims to mitigate the degree to which crime victims face a criminal justice system that at times ignores their rights and treats them with disrespect. And whereas the victim assistance community faces new challenges to reach and serve all victims, including victims of new crimes like cybercrime, terrorism, and victims who have not always trusted the criminal justice system, including immigrant victims, urban youth, and victims who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or questioning. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 21 through 27, 2013, provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy, creativity, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspires its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Schenectady City Council hereby joins with Gary R. McCarthy, Mayor of the City of Schenectady, in proclaiming the week of April 21 through the 27, 2013, as National Crime Victims Rights Week and reaffirming Schenectady's commitment to respecting and enforcing victims' rights and address their needs throughout the year. Madam President, I move this resolution.
All right, is there a second? Ms. Prazzo, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mayor McCarthy, and all of the City Council Members for recognizing our week. It's very important to us and to all of the folks that are in the various victims groups. We, of course, are in the Parents Murder Children Group, and, you know, sad to say, we're always getting new members, but to have the support of folks like yourselves in our county, our city, is very important to us and to the others. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Do you want to mention the event that you have?
Rose Garden, yes. Oh, yes. I'll let Tina do that. So, we kicked off yesterday in Saratoga County in Schenectady here. We're going to be hosting our event on Wednesday at noon in Schenectady Central Park in the Rose Garden, and if it rains, we'll be in the pavilion, and we invite all of you to attend. It's at noon, and we'll have -- it lasts about an hour, but it's one of the most memorable events through the week. It's one of my favorites, not only because it's in Schenectady in the Rose Garden, but it's really special because it's the families. It's more for them and for to speak of their loved ones and everyone remembering them and honoring them. So, thank you, this, I appreciate your support. It's been 16 years we've been doing this, so you guys have been amazing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all the out-of-order resolutions, so we'll now move to the public hearings. If the clerk would read the first public hearing.
Public Hearing Number One, Regarding Changing the Zoning District for 1502 Crane Street to C2 Mixed-Use Commercial.
I have no one signed up on this public hearing, so I'll declare this public hearing closed. We'll move on to public hearing number two.
Public Hearing Number Two, Regarding Rezoning of Part of 515 Kings Road from R1 Single-Family Residential to R3 Multiple-Family Residential.
I have one person signed up, Donald Cropsey.
Madam President, Council Members, Mayor, my name is Donald Cropsey, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, James Hessler. This application was made in January, and it's been before the City Planning Commission and the Council Committee, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have on the application.
Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare that public hearing closed. Public Hearing Number Three.
Public Hearing Number Three, In Regard to an Abandonment of Streets in the Woodlawn Preserve.
I have no one signed up for this public hearing, so I'll declare that public hearing closed, and we moved on to the approval of the minutes from April 8, 2013. Ms. Brucker, second. Ms. Prazzo, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Communications and petitions.
Another communications presented to the City Council for Monday, April 22, 2013. From the Mayor, a list of appointments dated Monday, April 22, 2013. A letter dated April 22, 2013, from Paul LaFon, Director of Water and Wastewater, attached to a resolution recommending the award of the waterline project, Cheltenham Avenue, to the lowest responsible bid made by Tom Kubrick Company of Gansford, New York, in the amount of $103,039. Under petitions, there are none.
Okay, I'll move on to committee reports. Ms. Porterfield.
I just want to update what's been going on with the dog park plans. They continue, the rendering has been done by the architects, so they're moving forward with that. And at this point, they're also looking for volunteers to help with that. So, we received an email from Mary Ann Rissuto, and she is -- they're looking for people that would like to work on the committee that's working to beautify the dog park. The plans are coming together, and so they're looking for people to help with cleanup and fundraisers. So, if anyone's interested in working on that project with the dog park, they can contact Mary Ann Rissuto, and the phone number that she's left is 347-1004. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you. Just, I made a kind of a comment about it at our committee meeting, and even though it wasn't on the Finance Committee, I thought it was pertaining to finances, so I will talk about it. The waterline project on Cheltenham Avenue that we just announced being awarded and is on the agenda, came in $103,000. There were eight bids. We had eight different companies who bid on this and which Ms. Prazzo said, "Carl, eight bids is great news." And I said, "But the even better news was that it came in under budget." And so, I just want to, again, highlight that fact that when we have multiple bids, we do get things that come in under budget, and so I wanted to recognize that. And additionally, I think, if at all possible, and I know that sometimes coordinating some of these things is sometimes challenging, but if, before we go out to bid, things that are kind of in the queue to come up, if we were able to announce them at the council meetings, similarly to neighborhood events and meetings, it might be just enough to get even additional -- because we got eight here, but we don't always get eight. Sometimes we get one or two. And so, if we could announce them at the council meetings before they go out to bid, letting people know something's going out, that might help as well. So, I'd like to maybe suggest that as a future option.
Good idea.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Prazzo.
Yeah, I just, again, want to reiterate our support for the U.S. Postal workers. You know, the resolution certainly meant a lot, but I think as a whole, the Council, we recognize, first of all, the jobs that we're protecting, as well as, you know, it can sometimes mean the difference of whether someone gets their medication or gets a check that they need to buy dinner that night, or whatever the case may be. So, although I'm pleased we did the resolution, I just wanted to add another word of support.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we'll move on to privileges of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have one person signed up, Mary McLean.
My name is Mary McLean. I live in I live in the city. Item number one reads, "An ordinance to amend Chapter 165 to include the addition of new greens fee categories. Charging nonresidents more money to play golf is counterproductive. The golf course is a destination. We should welcome newcomers. They linger, not newcomers, we should welcome nonresidents. They linger, stop to have a meal, perhaps shop for a special occasion, and if they like the Schenectadians they're playing with, maybe they'll consider buying a house here and stay permanently. Does the city really want to advertise that nonresidents are treated differently? That's what happens when you put up a public sign and they read it what their fees are going to be for playing if they come here to play. The list is public. Everybody sees it. Schenectady is an entertainment, an art center. Do you tell people, "Come and entertain, be entertained downtown," and then when you go to the other end of town, it's going to cost you more to be entertained? This is no way to treat visitors to the city. Charge the same for residents and nonresidents. Item number nine, "A resolution authorizing the distribution, dispensing, and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages during St. Anthony's annual street fair. Council needs to pay close attention to dates when granting waivers to organizations for special events. Conflicts between nonprofits should be avoided, especially when it's a long-established event like the one named in this resolution. Two years ago, there was a Rose Garden fundraiser, Upper Union Street Strawberry Festival, the Irish Celtic Fair, and St. Anthony's Festa, all held on the same day. St. Anthony's Festa has been going on at the same time for years. The other events are new. Vote for this resolution, but spread the dates when considering the events." I am all in favor of item number 11 in having the Saturday delivery continued. I would like to support the resolution, but I also, and I also think council should do more than lip service. If everyone does what I do, the post office would not be in trouble. I write lots of letters during the year. Some are sent to a friend who is 103 years old.
I need you to summarize, please.
I send Valentine cards, Christmas cards, and so on. And you know what? She writes back. And the last letter I received from her, she said that she was using her treadmill every day.
Okay.
How's that for diversity? Senior citizens are winners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we will move on to approval of the legislative agenda. Okay. Ms. Parrazo? Ms. Rucker seconds it. All in favor? Aye. All right. Now we'll go on to privilege of the floor regarding city business, and I have six people signed up. So Deborah Rembert?
Good afternoon. This is, I'm here to speak with, speak about the Schenectady Tenant Association meeting that we're having here on the April 24th at 6:30 at the Machasney Room in the library, 99 Clinton Street. I'm hoping that you will all come and help us to make some wise decisions concerning tenants that are having problems with landlords, and try to help us all to resolve our differences. I think that landlords are very good people. They're trying to do some very positive things. They came down here and spoke about that a couple of weeks ago. But we also need to have a balance, have the tenants to have something to say about what they feel is also happening in this community. I want to see, I want to see tenants to brainstorm ideas on how to work with landlords to improve housing. I appreciate the writing that Kathleen Moore wrote up about what we're trying to do, because we really want to be unified with landlords. We really want to find ways to help each other to better our situation, and we want you to help us to better our situation, our growth and development here in Schenectady. We need a lot of growth and development here in Schenectady concerning housing, and we know that you want to help us to grow and be productive here, and have landlords and tenants to be, to negotiate and work together and make this a better city so that we can all live here in peace and harmony. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Harry Brand?
Harry Brand, resident of Schenectady. I've been asked by a number of people from the Independence Party, the Democratic Party, and the Republican Party to come down here tonight and express my gratitude and their gratitude to Mr. Riggi for the outstanding job he's done on the City Council, and apologize for the way he's been treated by other members of the council. This is coming from the hearts of other citizens of this city, and I hope on election day, it'll show its fruit. This is shameful, the way this man is being treated. As an individual coming down here for at least 20 years, for the citizens of this city to stand here and speak, not just come down once a year, but to come down at regular meetings and express his heartfelt feelings and how the city should be run and represent the individuals in this city. There's no one I know of here or anyplace else in this city that has done that. You could be in office for 16 years or 20 years, but you haven't represented the citizens. You may be on the committee, the council, you may be a mayor, but when it comes down to representing the city citizens, it's not there. It seems, once you've been accepted by the party, you've lost contact with the citizens. That's my opinion. And I've asked the people to show this when they come to the voting, to vote for an individual, not for a party, but for the individuals. The sad part of this whole thing is that there's a good possibility that there's individuals right here that perhaps want to go on further in politics, that perhaps want to be a mayor in this city. I certainly hope not, and that comes from my heart, because you don't deserve it for what you've done so far. These private meetings, just leaving an individual from the City Council out of the meetings, and leaving the press out of the meetings, we should know as citizens, through the press alone, what takes part in every meeting that you discuss city business. It's shameful, and it's not acceptable. It's wrong. It's not the American way. It's not what our men and women went and fought for. It's not what the citizens in this city voted for, and it's time you just wake up and treat each and every person the American way with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall?
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. I think one thing we need to do with these boarded-up houses is have the cops check over there more often than have people breaking in those houses where it's boarded up, and parties and everything else going on. We need to fix up the streets, the potholes, and fix up every boulevard in particular, for one thing. And the curbs need to be fixed, too. So there's a lot to be done before somebody gets hurt, and we better do something fast. We don't need nobody getting hurt in this town.
Okay. Thank you. Raymond Morrell?
Hello, council members. My name is Raymond Morrell. I'm a citizen of Schenectady. I live in Hamilton Hill. I've come here to bring to your attention property on 738 Page Street. It's a property that is severely rundown, dilapidated, been abandoned for years, and it really should have been torn down years ago. Just to bring to your attention, I mean, there has been many fires there. Building is partially collapsed, and there's actually been a dead body found there in the last six months. I've tried to contact the zoning board, the different offices of the Schenectady City, and they have not responded to me in any fashion to give me any kind of idea of when this building would be turned down, torn down. And they haven't even acknowledged that it's even on the list to be torn, to be torn, demolished. There have been many fires in the City of Schenectady. Recently, there was an arson scare, where they had many buildings that were burned. This building has been dilapidated and abandoned for many more years, and has been far, in far worse condition. I have tried to email each one of the City Council members, a copy of pictures of this property so that you can get a look at it, but I guess the file that I sent you was too large, so it was rejected. If you would like, I can try to send it to you again if you can give me a different email address. I also want to let you know that it's a very unsafe property, because the chimney is, it looks like it's ready to fall down, and I think you should know that there are children that get on the bus on the corner of Page and Albany Street daily, and they're right on the corner where this big brick building is on 7, I guess it's 736 Albany Street, which is right next to the other building. This property is easily accessible, it's not roped off, not contained in any kind of way, and children can easily wander in there. There has been many people who have come there who are drug trafficking, vagrants that come there every day. I live right around the corner on Page Street, 302 Page Street, and I can see the property and people coming all the time. So like I said, I really would appreciate it if somebody would take some action and have the zoning board or the code enforcement actually look at this property and move forward on getting it removed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mary McLean?
Is this privilege of the floor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I want to say a few words about the comments that were made at the last council meeting. Was it a good idea to limit speech in a democracy? Is it a good idea for the lights to flash in one's face while exercising his or her right to free speech? What's so good about praising the importance of education when council members make city appointments, but ignore economic experts who tell council, "Do not pass the eight-year county contract"? What is so great about the city spending money it doesn't have? On at least five occasions, I heard the mayor compare Schenectady to the city of Utica. After the fifth time, I took the liberty to call Utica. I spoke to a representative in Mayor Palmieri's office. I asked him three questions. The first question was about fluoride. He said, "The city does not deal with fluoride." Imagine that, Mr. Mayor. A city that receives $5 million more of unrestricted funds does not have a budgeted line item for fluoride. I also asked about medical coverage for part-time elected officials. He said, "Utica does not pay medical coverage for part-time elected officials." Imagine that, Mr. Mayor. No line item for medical coverage. And I asked about city cars. He said, "The city of Utica has cars for three people, the mayor, police chief, and fire chief. Our mayor sold the mayor's car, plus six others, and kept 28 cars from a fleet of 35. Schenectady cannot afford those extra cars. It doesn't have $5 million extra dollars of unrestricted funds. Mr. Mayor, sell those cars and use the money to pay off the principal for the Foster Avenue complex." Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Kelleher?
Honorable Mayor, Madam President, City Council members, good evening. I'm Joe Kelleher. I'm a city resident and a candidate for City Council. This past weekend, my wife and I had an opportunity to visit the Earth Day event over in the Central Park, a fantastic event, and we saw lots and lots of dogs inside the dog park utilizing that, and they seemed to be enjoying themselves along with their owners. There's an event coming up next Tuesday that I wanted to mention, and that's over at the Price Chopper Community Room, a multi-neighborhood association event with 12309 Eastern Avenue and Central State Street, and it's a meet-the-school board candidates event, and I hope that many of the residents in those areas and other areas of the city would be more than happy, will attend. There's one other item that came to my attention as I read in the news. It appears that there unfortunately has once again been a closed-door meeting regarding city business with only the members of a single political party allowed to attend. However legal this may be, it does remain a biased representation of the people of the City of Schenectady, who are, of course, your constituents. While I would expect more from this council, we are disappointed once again by party politics. It's very unfortunate. I remind you that this November, there are three seats which people have the option to change to create a better system of checks and balances, and I urge all Schenectadians to think for themselves. Thank you very much for the time.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I have no one else signed up, so I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we'll move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Parrazo?
Yes, thank you. It was a wonderful week in Schenectady. First of all, I want to congratulate the mayor on an amazing Realtors' Day earlier this week, and I want to thank the people who wrote in letters to the editor that gave a more well-rounded view of the event, because it really was wonderful. It was packed house of what I spoke to, many enthusiastic people. It talked a lot about the treasures of our community. We learned a lot of interesting things, like we have the fastest-growing tech park in General Electric. Most people would think it's global foundries, but nope, indeed, it's right here in Schenectady. We have the largest waterfront development project that's being started at the Alco Plant, so just wonderful. Then I went to two ribbon cuttings, both on J Street, brand-new businesses, so that always helps me combat some of the negativity that is out there swirling around, which was wonderful. And at those ribbon cuttings, I actually came to a realization, some very, very special things are happening right now. Last month, Proctors announced their Broadway series for next year. One of our shows coming up is Matthew Bourne's Sleeping Beauty. Matthew Bourne is a very famous choreographer in England, and his show is going on tour. It is going to London, Moscow, Ravenna, Italy, New York City, Washington, D.C., Los Angeles, and Schenectady. MSI just put in their new Think exhibit that is by IBM. The Think exhibit opened in 2011 in New York City. It was there for two years. It has been disassembled. Half of it has gone to Epcot Center, and half of it has come to Schenectady. That just tickles me. I think we're a very special community. And third, as of today, Time Magazine has released their "Made in the USA" manufacturing is back, and featured in that magazine is an article that talks a lot about Schenectady and the GE battery plant. So yes, I will reiterate, we have our challenges, but boy, are we moving forward, and boy, do we have a fabulous, fabulous community that I am extremely proud to live in and represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Erickson? Okay. Ms. Porterfield? Whoever?
Okay. Thank you. I just have a couple of, actually...
I just have a couple of actually community announcements that I'd like to make. The Hamilton Hill Art Center is doing a fundraiser this Friday, April 26th. It's a building renovation benefit, it's a jazz concert, so for the folks that like jazz. It's going to be at the First Unitarian Society of Schenectady, which is located at 1221 Wendell Avenue. So it's going to be some great music and a great evening, and so it starts at 7:00 P.M. So any folks that would like to support the Art Center, certainly we invite you to be there. Also, I'd like to mention that the community group is doing a Meet the Chief at Oliver Missionary Baptist Church at 6:00 P.M. So folks are invited to meet Chief Brian Kilcullen to come. He'll be doing a presentation just about some of the things that are going on in the city. People have had different questions, concerns. This is an opportunity for people from all communities to come. There'll be a question and answer period for him to answer any questions that folks may have. So that's on the 2nd of May. And then on May 4th, the Schenectady Human Rights Commission is doing End Poverty Schenectady, and that's going to be held at Proctors Theater on the second floor in the Fenimore Gallery. It's starting at 10:00 A.M. and it's going on to 12:00 P.M. So there'll be a group of panelists just bringing awareness to the situation of poverty in Schenectady and ways to end that. So it's going to be a panel discussion, and it's just the beginning of what's going to be an ongoing series of discussions to the people to bring things to the table, questions as well as resolutions. And there will be a media alert going out about that. Folks are invited, it's open to the public, there is absolutely no cost for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you. Couple things tonight, I just wanted to talk, we saw some folks from Retree tonight, and I just wanted to thank all the volunteers for Retree and planting trees in our city. It's a volunteer organization, right? So the labor is free, they do a lot of good work, and as trees get older, it's a life cycle, and we all see how some of them are getting, they wear out and they get cut down and fall, and so we plant new ones, and I think that helps our communities and the neighborhoods show some vibrance. Also, in the news today is how there's a tenant group also getting together with a SLIT group, and normally maybe that wouldn't be such huge news, but I think it's actually pretty interesting considering some of the stuff we went through recently with our new policies and rental certificates. If these two organizations can solve all the problems of the quality of housing in Schenectady, I think it would gladly put us out of business, but we wouldn't need to put so many resources in that area, we could focus those resources someplace else in the city, and I think that would be good. So I encourage those two groups to meet as often as they need to to solve the problems. And if they can do it without us meddling, I think that's probably better for them and better for everybody, we could focus our efforts someplace else. Third on my list, it's springtime, it's getting warmer, and when the weather warms up, I think of, I know Ms. Joy Hall mentions it all the time, and she was talking about it tonight, with potholes and roadways, and we have some paving to come up. And over the last couple of years, we've paved a lot of the roads in the city, and I think that we've picked up the pace, got a lot more of the main thoroughfares repaired and up, you know, improved. Two years ago, I think the quality of the work that was done was phenomenal. I mean, the roads were smooth, the manhole covers were in perfect alignment with the pavement. I mean, some of these things are kind of small nuances, but I think important. Last year, not sure the quality of the surface was as good. Some of the areas I saw might have been flaking and things. And so I'd like to maybe see if we could add it to the agenda in the next couple of weeks to discuss and committee, to see what process we think we might want to use this coming year. I know we have a smaller budget, so there won't be as much paving going on, but I want to make sure we understand what we liked, what we didn't, and maybe learn from experience to stretch it as far as we can. And lastly, you know, Ms. Parazzo talked about the Realtors' Open House. You know, I received some good feedback. I had people who were kind of unbiased opinions, some folks who aren't from the areas, people who are in real estate, some people who aren't. And it opened some eyes, you know. You can't please everybody, and I'm sure that we didn't convince every person who went to that event that Schenectady is the best place on earth, but I think there was a lot of different perspectives, and I think that we did open some eyes, and if we changed one person's opinion, I think it was a success. If we changed 30 or 40 people's opinion, then I would say it was a grand success, knowing we probably didn't change every opinion. But you know, Ms. Parazzo mentioned some pretty extraordinary things, and I'm proud of my city. Everyone I talk to, I tell how great it is. We got our issues, but who doesn't? And so I think that as long as we're making progress, that's good for the city. And so I know the mayor and the staff put a lot of effort into the Realtors' Open House, and you don't see that going on in a lot of other communities. I think it was, I don't know if I want to call it a first, but as far as I know, it was a first. And you know, I thank everyone who volunteered, again, volunteer, a lot of volunteer help on that, as well as the city staff and the mayor, so I thank everybody for that as well. I think it was great, so.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riggi.
Yes, just quickly, that address, 738 Page? Mayor, I've turned that in at least twice, I know, and I'll follow up tomorrow, and I hope that you will too on that house. That has been a problem, and I think Kevin Chairs has brought that to my attention. I don't have my list in front of me, but that has been a problem. I've had complaints about that before, so we could follow up. And just quickly, Mount Pleasant, you're going to have a cleanup on May 4th, I believe? Okay, May 4th at the Skyler Street Tennis Courts, the people are going to meet at 9:00 o'clock. May 4th, neighborhood cleanups are very important, so get involved if you can help out. It'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Riggi, you know, we have a number of those, trying to put together a package again with the council so that we'll take down as many as 100 of the worst properties in the city. They're expensive, there's ones that the city has site control on where we own, there's other ones that private owners still have site control or work with the law department to try and go after those individuals. It's kind of the negative side, where we saw the Realtors' Day as the positive side, but we're again trying to balance that, where we're showing people the opportunity that's here, did it in a very impressive manner, thanked the council members for their kind words. It was what people seemed to think was the largest one that had ever been done in the capital district and the most comprehensive. We do that every month, to try and do something to get the message out, to talk about the real estate values that exist here in the city. At the same time, we're trying to do the enforcement to go after the problem landlords, property owners, and it's a slow, methodical process in both ways, chip away at the negative side and to build up on the positive side. So I appreciate the council's support and effort, look forward to putting a package together with the Community Development Block grants so that we'll be able to again put, we'll call a major step forward in the continued rebuilding of the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay. And I also just wanted to make sure we thank Mary Delisandro for her work on the Realtors' event. I think she put a lot of time into that. I also just wanted to recognize some people who were honored at the YWCA dinner the other night. Carol Merrill Missouri received the President's Circle Award. The Susan Rosenthal Woman in Business Award went to the folks at Civitello's, Beatrice, Angela, and Roe and Girami. So that was good. And then the Women of Achievement included Sarah Erickson, who's an account representative with New York State Industries for the Disabled, Nadia Erlich-Finkelstein, who's a retired social worker and administrator and consultant, Penny Haynes, who's Vice President for Academic Affairs at Schenectady County Community College, Wendy Rasher, who is Vice President of Clinical Services at Ellis Medicine, and Carol Ryan, who's Manager of Environmental Health and Safety at GE. Some outstanding women, I think they all definitely deserve to be recognized. Also wanted to mention a couple of events coming up. The Schenectady Day Nursery is having their 14th Annual A Little Bit of Jazz and More. That is going to be on Monday, the 29th, at Cornell's Restaurant in Schenectady from 5:30 to 8:00 P.M. This is always a great event, and it's a really good fundraiser for the nursery. And also, the Schenectady Cancer Foundation is holding their annual fundraiser, A Lot of Night Music. Theirs is going to be Saturday, the 27th, at the Mohawk Golf Club. If anyone has any interest in either of these events, feel free to give me a call, and I'll make sure I connect you with the right people. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Erickson. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Do you want this?
Please.
Okay. Here.[1766.91]